Example.
Okay, the time is three thirty four and I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Um please uh could we have a roll call please?
Director Sauer.
Here.
Director Rice.
Here.
Director Karasana.
Here.
Director Happy.
Here.
Director Casey.
Here.
Board Chair Raha.
Here. There'll be no action taken tonight, so it's just a discussion on the superintendent position. Item two, public comment, we have. If somebody from Ed Minnesota wants to step up into the podium and take five minutes and state their position.
At this time Minnesota is going to just pass on that.
Okay. Uh then also Ask Me, if Ask Me wants to step up and say something on their position.
We also as union will pass on that.
Okay, very good. Next item is to approve the agenda, we have a motion.
So.
Motion by Jackie.
Support.
Support by Danielle. Comments or questions on the agenda? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay. Moving on to superintendent candidate discussion. And for those of you who don't know, I'm just gonna do this brief little word on how we got here today. So, we had six applicants. The board met and we eliminated three right off the bat. So we had three candidates. Tried to schedule interviews with those three candidates, they turned us down. At least two of them did. Uh so they turned down the offer to interview. And that's why we're here today, but a few weeks ago, I looked at the MASA, which is the Minnesota Association of School Administrators website, and there was fifteen openings for superintendent on that website. Now there's only three. Where did those candidates go? So basically what I think we're trying to do here today, the members will decide what's next, how do we wanna do this? Um so I'm just gonna open the floor and have the members say what they want.
Well, what uh is there like, should we look at the other ones and I mean one didn't turn it down, right? Did one wanna be interviewed?
Uh-uh.
I thought you said two of them turned it down.
One decided that he was too far away.
Yeah, so they all turned it down, all three of them, okay. Well. We could open it up again?
Well, I'll I'll just throw this in, this is a lousy time to post for an administrator, it's terrible. They're already sucked in for next year, so what do we do? We, you know, we could go out post again, it's like we did this last time, on the same sites and see if we find some. But I doubt that we're gonna find anything, we have another option of going, and I realize this is money and and it's hard to spend it, but to go through a search with like school board association or somebody else. We had offers to do that and it's too much money, I.
It's like forty thousand dollars or something like that?
It was, it was like extreme and again, you know, last time we did this, we got lucky. This time not so lucky, you know?
Uh we didn't, I mean, I don't really think we looked for too long or looked, I don't know, I I personally think that we should just give it another shot, I don't, I mean what else are you gonna do? You you hope. That, you know.
Yeah, I think you almost have to, I think you almost have to repost.
Repost.
At least to try.
We don't have any other option really to do, other than to repost. And maybe this.
We could look at the quotes for the, we could look at those quotes again, I think there was a couple. I thought they were both pretty expensive.
I can't remember what MSBA was.
That one, I don't remember, so that might not have been as bad.
Less, less expensive.
Yeah, the one private company, I think, like Shelly said, was like forty thousand, that was high.
Yeah.
We got lucky last time because we didn't have to spend that forty grand, but we had the protocol on what to do from the two terms of all that.
Well, and if you think about it, maybe, you know, these positions are all getting filled already, you know, I I get that, but maybe now, maybe this is a space where there's gonna be people that are saying, darn it, we didn't get that position, you know, maybe we can go after this one, so maybe we have that little window where might be interested.
When you say through MSBA, we were listed through MSBA, weren't we?
But they, th- this time they would do the search.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they would, that's where the extra money comes in, when they do the search.
And what they.
Do we know what the cost is?
They weed it out themselves.
I remember there was a couple.
It's like we did when we hired Dr. Blanchard, we've had the search, it whittled it down from twenty seven to five.
And was MSBA the one in charge of that one?
No.
No.
It was Patty, Patty Phillips, it was, it was an exec connect, Patty Phillips was in charge of that, so.
But a different company though?
Okay.
I, you know.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I might add, I was involved in the last two searches, however, it's, it sounded like you had quite a number of candidates.
We did.
And going through exec search or whatever that, whatever that is, you know, might be worth the process, or we've got, we've got a couple of things that we have to certainly think about, I mean, we can hopefully start construction in the next couple of months here. And Mr. Norman is leaving, or due to leave at the end of June. I think we have one or two qualified candidates from within. And I don't know if we wanna approach those persons, person or persons and get their take, maybe even get their take on uh the search process.
That's up to you guys. I also know that Superintendent Norman is not gonna leave us high and dry. So. I think there's, there's a couple of different ways to go about this. And I, you know, I don't disagree with the internal candidates, I don't. But the question I have is, why didn't they apply? You know, you know, they would've got a fair shake of the job.
Well.
If they didn't want the job, I don't.
You know, maybe, maybe it's more of a, you know, if you do it to someone, if you use someone internal, they knew that it was like interim or something where they could try it, you know, they could try it out, see how it goes, give us the opportunity to, you know, continue to search and maybe post that search, you know, you post it now, if you don't get anybody because everybody's locked in, you post it again during, you know, kinda that time when it's hunting. Um and you don't have to make anything really formal, I guess, or you know, like long term.
So we look at a, what do they call them, interim?
Yeah, like interim. Might mean you're wearing a couple hats too.
Yeah.
You know, kinda when our superintendent ended up doing the, you know, principal jobs and duties as well, so that they could kinda cover both roles.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I believe it's, it has been done before within our school district.
It has, on multiple occasions, not just most recently, but I know Mr. Vercheck did that.
Mr. Vercheck did it, yeah.
So it's not unheard of, and at least you'd have somebody in that, you know, in that role to to kinda keep things, keep everything kinda going forward.
So at least, well, as you stated, dark cry, that it would give us certainly an extended period of time, uh it would also give the interim the opportunity to show us their wares.
Yeah, see how they, see how they like it, what, you know, how does it work.
Well, and is it possible to post for both, I mean, at this time, like post for superintendent, post for interim? And see what happens with it, at least then we'd have both balls rolling at the same time, you know, we wouldn't be.
I think the only reason you don't usually see the interim posts is that most people again.
Somebody, yeah.
Well, or they don't, they don't want, you know, to leave, if it's not a permanent position where they want to apply, if it's just, it's just interim. Or maybe someone's, maybe someone's in between or or retired, but wants to come back over that and so I mean, I could say if it could be either, I mean, I think you could call it, you know, superintendent position and or interim superintendent position.
And or.
You know, something like that, if someone's interested in, I don't necessarily don't find them to, you know, sign on for a long contract, but I would sign on for the district, you know, for six months or whatever, as long as, you know, to help, help through the process.
And really with the news coming out today about who to tap, looking like things are gonna be better for them, I mean, it looks better too. Our little area, you know?
Well, I think that, I mean, I and it, and again, you said there's a lot of positions open, that probably was, that probably was hard.
Not only three left.
Right.
Well, lose left, I will.
And then, and again, the distance is lots, I'm always really concerned when I see like people apply that are from far away, I just don't think that that's gonna work, I mean, that's just my
Three positions left.
Three left.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah.
That's just my, my bias, or I still think people, you know, tend to relocate for a longer time, um unless they, unless that's their goal to like
Mm-hmm.
To move, uh.
To move.
But, but that, I think that the bulk of jobs available might have been, might have been kind of a, a downs, you know, downside there.
Mm-hmm, this possibility, yeah.
But I think that we're attractive, I think if, um, you know, if we're able to repost it, if there's a way to highlight the um, the fact that the school's going, you know, has passed referendum, but will be building, you know, a new, a new building, maybe that will you know, it might, it might draw some, you know, additional attention.
I think with posting internally for interim would normally worry me with this big project, but with Injensa being the project manager, it's not a huge weight on the superintendent or the interim, so.
Right, right, we have some.
Makes me feel a little bit more secure, like it can be done.
Yeah, I would agree.
Are you saying like post internally first, if we have no interest then, like you're saying, post it?
I would say post.
Internal and external?
Well.
We don't have to interview anyone externally if we end up with internal.
With internal, exactly, I would, but I would post.
We're not required to interview.
Interim as well as permanent, I do and or, I mean, I, just to save time, you know, just.
Yeah, yeah, can keep both going.
Keep, keep both balls going at the same time.
Because it's an admirable position, so if we get a people and we look at it, we're like, no, we're not interested in holding interviews right now, we're gonna you know, open it up again or whatever, or we have internal people, we run the top two, then the external, I think we can, we can, we can interview who who we just, who would like to, that we not just anybody who flies in and out of the room.
Mark your thinking.
Yeah, I I guess I'm, I have a little concern on posting internally and externally again at the same time, is it going to, if the, if what I'm assuming that these couple of persons are interested, is it gonna throw them off?
And if that's, I guess I don't I don't know if we need, if we should post externally again right away, maybe we should look at options for with the MSBA to see what that costs, if we're gonna actually be needing to do a search, and then in the, and then we could post an internal position until we see if.
But wouldn't have if, if there was an internal person who wanted it, wouldn't have they applied when we posted it? I mean.
I mean, unless it's just.
I, I don't.
If it's a temporary position though, maybe somebody might be, or more have to. I don't know, I don't know these persons you're talking about.
Cindy made my point, you know, we have a couple of internals that are licensed. And why don't they want the job? I don't know. I mean. So I think, you know, just for kind of putting the tent on this thing, I agree that we should post for a permanent position. And I can get ahold of MSBA and talk to Barb Dorn, who's in charge of these things, and find out what's the cost, what's the cost for us to do it? You guys do the search and I'll bring it back, and then we can vote on it at some point. But the internal posting, okay, now you have to remember, we still have Mr. Norman until the end of June.
Right.
And he's also indicated he won't leave us high and dry, we can't find anybody, gonna have to work with Mr. Norman.
Right, which is kind of like an interim.
Yeah.
At that point, and it is, yeah, and and that's kind of similar situation with, with the hope that if, you know, someone, you know, someone comes on that there could be even a, a small overlap, a few weeks, a month or so, you know, some, some onboarding or whatever, people call it up, training.
Well.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
We don't get that in my, in my work.
From my understanding though, the best time to put out for applicants in December.
Is when we do it, yeah.
Oh, we were a little bit later.
We were actually later, the more.
Yeah, January, February.
Yeah, so, I mean, even if we can get one of the two that are licensed in the building to be an interim or temporary.
To hold out till December.
Cause yeah, maybe they don't wanna leave their positions or, you know, maybe, but for a temporary and work that out and what that looks like, but
But if we.
The thing is, is we have to have those conversations with those people to see if that's even something they're interested in, if not, then we need to
Yeah.
But.
keep our posting.
And if.
And I think we should keep it out there and see if somebody comes on.
If you're saying Adrian said that he wouldn't leave us high and dry.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we want some, another interim?
Yeah, we have to just keep him for interim until we get some.
Why would we just want him? To keep him as an interim until we get a superintendent.
And I think the only thing would be if, if somebody interim would be willing to, um.
Oh, our interim would just.
So here, here's the deal, let's just lay it out here. Let's just say for argument's sake that Mr. Norman decides that he wants to be the interim and he's accepting the position. Let's also say that he boasts a part-time. Okay, that affects his salary. He's not gonna make what he's making because he's less than full-time.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it a discussion point? If we're, if, if we offer him and, you know, we'll put together this committee, if we wanna do that.
Well, I don't, I don't really think we have to go there quite yet.
Not yet.
I think we should post again and see what we get, because obviously Adrian doesn't want the job, he doesn't want the job, I get that he will do interim, whatever. But I mean, if we can find a permanent superintendent, I'd be much happier with that.
And I, I, I see exactly what you're saying, it's not, you don't wanna go from, you know, interim to, you know, like just have someone that is gonna be part.
Yeah.
I think the only benefit of, of trying to see if anybody, if like, within the school system wants their interim, be like, if they're just not sure they wanna leave their current position.
Right.
If they're just not able.
Is that job for me or do I really love what I do, do I love, you know, I love to teach, do I love to, you know, whatever you're doing?
Um maybe you just don't know if you wanna do it, Mr. York.
Right, so I guess then that, that way maybe, if that were the case, somebody wanted to just track it, like, you know, whoever's licensed here. And then we talk to Adrian, Mr. Norman and say, can you work with this person as interim, it would be only part-time, obviously, because, you know, then we'd have two interims and we'll just see where it goes, but my first choice is that we go out to find a new superintendent and I'm not gonna I don't wanna play these like little games where, well, he'll stay for this one and that, you know, I just, just think that's just too.
It's not long-term solution.
No, it's too chaotic for district.
It's just, yeah, so we just need to find, um, some, a solution.
Especially with a bill coming, I mean, we need a, we need a permanent superintendent.
Yeah, and.
But when's the best time to put those applicants out, I mean, if we keep it open now, are we gonna get the best applicant or you know, are we just gonna start getting random or nobody and then, you know? My understanding again is, you put out for application, you know, applicants in, put that posting up in December. And we might have missed that train where those other applicants on those thirteen, you know, they went to those ones, but had we gotten in a little bit earlier, would we have had more?
Maybe there were a few people that would have applied, yeah.
Cause we had quite a few.
The first.
When we hired our current superintendent.
I would agree.
To, to add on what Director Sauer asked to say too, is, is, we do have a bill coming on, and I, I'm not sure if a a temporary, but a
Inter.
Couple of days a week, I don't know if that's in our best interest.
No, I was thinking that it would be.
I guess it would be a busy job for, for administration, yeah, it's, well, it is what it is, you know, we've, until we can find someone that that's gonna take the job, I think we just kinda have to play it that part by ear and.
I mean, I'm thankful that he's not gonna leave us high and dry, you know, because I know he wants the best for the school, but at the end of the day, yeah, we're gonna pick up on that.
Right, but we know it's temporary, we need to, we need to find, we need to find our, our next, our next person to take that role, so.
So we post internally for thirty days? Or post internally for, Adrian's done, his contract's done on June thirtieth. So we need to get somebody in here before then, if it's an internal candidate, so be it, okay? At least they'll have some type of a knowledge of what we got going on here and and then.
I just don't see what the problem of doing both internal, externals at the same time, I don't see where that.
I don't know that we wanna do an interim externally and then just have somebody else come for the school, you know.
Yeah, I think, I'd say.
An external is a regular post.
Yeah, an internal posting and an external posting all the same time.
Because our posting ended, I have an N B H C, I don't know if we just post it again for thirty days and just leave it open.
No.
I mean.
Well, I think we can do that, and, but again, here's Nirvana, we get somebody, he gets in here, let's just say for argument's sake, June fifteenth. And he works with Adrian for two weeks and gets a feel for he or she, I shouldn't say he, but it's a feel for what we got going on here, because Adrian would fill him in and tell him what's going on, and then he can meet Injensa and take, and tell him what's going on, but, um, so I'm not opposing the external posting, that's we're gonna have to do that anyway.
I think you're just saying like, that's kind of like a, it would be like finding a four-leaf clover or something.
Yeah.
But we, I, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna find anybody by not posting either, so.
I agree.
I don't know if it hurts anything, if you open for thirty days and you don't get anybody, then maybe you close it again for two weeks and then repost, I think sometimes leaving it open.
I mean.
Whatever, or you.
When you post just internally, while one or two people are, are licensed, why would you post something for thirty days for one or two people?
Yeah.
Right.
Well.
Go and ask them, are you gonna, you wanna do it, I mean. Two of them.
Yeah, that, and we have that conversation with those two people and just see if they're interested.
Well, we could have that conversation, that's fine, I, you know.
But I just think it should be both.
At least so we have a plan in place for twenty twenty-four school year, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and then still look for a permanent person.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out this time, then, then we probably will have to wait till December.
Or we can, or we can talk, then talk to MSBA and see what their process is, they might have a, I mean. Yes, we, their process.
So.
It's because they have a program or process.
Or we can call Mr. Vercheck.
Well, he's busy, he's French township supervisor, he's got too much time, yeah.
Are we all in agreeance that we don't care to interview any more applicants that we reviewed?
It sounds like there's only those few that we.
That we didn't.
That we decided, yeah.
You know, I, one of the applicants, I knew one of his references, so I called this person and he gave me a description. Okay, I voted that we should interview him, but it only got one of the votes, and we decided majority rules, and that's just the way it goes, but I don't think we need to whoever the two candidates internal are, let's have a conversation. I know who one of them is, I do, but, but I don't know who the other one is, so I, I would be interested in talking to them privately and finding out if they're even interested in an interim position.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I mean, that's well within our.
And then the last duration of the time.
Come up with a hand, Carl, remember? Hit it on your shirt.
And they'll say for how long?
Yeah.
I mean, I.
How long?
Yeah.
Six months?
I don't know.
And be upfront with them that we are posting, but I think we should go ahead with that, the external post, I do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Because we don't know.
So.
And then maybe one of these people that we didn't vote in, maybe one of them will reply and then we'll see that they are very interested, yeah.
Reapply, right. Yeah, yeah. That would be true.
I mean, that, and.
It's open again, and we just, and, and really, it can be, you know, well, there's gonna be one person, so we're reposting to hopefully get more people to interview and you, please, you know, vote your usual vote.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So then, do we, you want to either contact MSBA?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, it kinda makes no sense, yeah.
I think.
If they wanna do the cer, I mean, do we want them to do the search?
Well, yeah, at least you could get that inter, information.
Get them information and then we can contact them back if we decide.
Yeah, definitely can, yeah. Cause I just don't think that we should not just externally post one more time.
No, I agree with you, I think we all agree.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt anything. I don't think, I, I don't know, maybe you guys disagree, but I don't.
No, no, I totally agree with you. Yeah.
Cause I'm posting externally again.
As quick as possible, I would say.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, Louise.
So what I'll do is I'll get ahold of MSBA Monday. And if I get some information on it, I'll bring it to the meeting that night and then we can decide, I mean, I'm not gonna have a special meeting to decide if we're gonna go with MSB doing the search or not, so.
And then honestly, I think, you know, in regards to contacting the people that are certified here, may, maybe it would be in our best interest to have someone like Adrian contact them and say if you're interested.
Yeah.
Call somebody, cause I don't wanna, well, go, you know, you hate to do that, I mean, they have opportunity and they chose not to, I mean, so I don't wanna invade their personal space either, you know, you don't wanna stand people? I don't, you know, I mean, it's like, I, I don't know, you know, why they wouldn't wanna do it, no, I'm kidding, but I just, I don't feel like we should, you know, get in their face, I think we should let Adrian get their face, or just have a conversation with them, just a, a conversation. And to see. I don't know.
Yeah, it does not hurt to ask.
First, mine just does, just mine.
It just never hurts to ask, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't hurt to ask.
No, feelings are gonna be hurt, it is what it is, you know, it's that maybe you just like what you're doing, you don't wanna, you don't wanna do something different.
So are you saying like upon the recommendation of Adrian or?
If they're interested.
No, I don't know, not at all, I think so.
I don't know.
No.
No, 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 I would say for Adrian just to talk to them and say, are you interested? If you are, would you just reach out to one of the board members and let us know?
If there's only one person, then we could, then we could just talk to them about what, what does that look like and work out, is it, is it.
Yeah, right. Is what I'm saying, I just don't think it should be one of us.
I would answer.
We can just negotiate with somebody, if they're interested, if we want a person, we wanna hire interns, you don't have to go.
Yeah.
No, I just think it should be.
And Adrian, you know, all over the, all over the state, it's a lesson. I think it's tough, I, I do, I, I get really concerned when I see the applications from far away, like, because it's just setting something, whatever, yeah.
Well, I, I do too, because you wonder if it's a stepping out point there.
Yeah.
Yeah, a short period of time, which doesn't really, I mean, yeah, it's okay, but it's, it's nice, it's nice to have somebody that is gonna settle in and learn, you know, learn the district, learn our teachers, learn, you know, administration.
I, I just think if, if there are two within our system, you know, because I haven't seen any of these qualifications, if there are, if there are two, you know, it'd be a nice transition if they were interested.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That happens a lot too, I mean, you do, I mean, that does happen, it's not, you know, it's not that people don't hire internally, I just, I think that's what's making it more difficult for us, if more schools were posting for superintendents, we could, you know, call if people didn't get it, hey, you know?
Right, yeah.
Like, you know, if we have more, I think we'd have more people, but I think a lot of it is a transition, you know, people that work as a district, if there's an opening, you know, you kinda
And they're just maybe not there yet, maybe they're just not ready for that transition.
You know the place, you know.
But that's why I think it'd be better if like Adrian just talked to them. For me, I mean, I don't even know who they are, so. But yeah, I just think he should be the one to talk to them. And then repost. Because we don't have to interview if we get somebody who's willing to come in, then we don't have, you know, from a, we don't have to do anything with the postings.
Okay. So, Monday, I'll contact MSBA and take care of what the fees are, what, what, you know, if they're doing the search, they're whittling, I mean, we get twenty candidates and then they, what's the cost for them doing the search, them whittling the candidates down to say five finalists or, you know, five candidates for us to interview or whatever, and then we decide.
But if we decide, we can still just post on their, to their site for free, right?
Yes, we can.
If you decide not to spend on.
The fees for them to do the search, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I might add, when, when you do talk, could you, and I don't know if there, anybody to give out that, this information, could you ask out of those fifteen opens that you stated for, did they assist in any of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, like what's their.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Yeah.
What's their success rate? Yeah, exactly. How confident are you, you can find us a good superintendent?
Yeah. Okay, I'll find out. And I'll find out the fee, but in the meantime. But in the meantime. We have school to build. And we have a superintendent yet. And again. Cause I I'm hoping that we get somebody in there that they can be brought up to speed quickly. With Adrian and with Injensa and Architectural Resources. It's nice to have somebody with knowledge of buildings. Know knowledge of construction. I know that there was some, some of the six candidates that had that experience, but. That's all they have.
And so is somebody gonna like talk to Adrian and ask him about talking to, reaching out to the people who are qualified here or?
I'll do that.
Okay.
I will. I'll see him Monday, so, well, at least I'll talk to him Monday, cause he'll be in court. He may not be, yeah, he's got, it's, it's not criminal, it's just gonna do that.
Oh, yeah, it's like. I got on the jury duty, I try, I got called to federal jury duty.
So, so can we though, also.
No, I got.
Well, because I have to.
I mean, if. We don't wanna wait till last minute, I think there also needs to be a conversation with Adrian on after June thirtieth, if we don't have a candidate, what does that look like?
How much would you want, what does that look like?
We need to, we need to start having something, I mean, because right now, we're all talking, it's all scatterbrained, honestly, it's ridiculous.
Yeah. Yeah.
I.
Yeah.
Um how much everything keeps changing, um, we need to, we need to.
Yeah.
Have more of a plan here, because I think the staff wants to know.
I think we have a pretty good plan now.
I think it's a good plan.
But we need to have those conversations and we need to have, we need to have that conversation, especially with Mr. Norman, and we need to. Talk about what does that look like and have that idea.
Yeah. I think.
So we're not making plans and having it in writing last minute or over the part that after he's gone, and now what do we do? Cause we didn't have that conversation prior to.
Right. Yeah, how, how much you do, or do you, or no part-time?
I mean, we're in there already, we've got it for less than two months now, we need to have that conversation. We need to know for sure, I mean, he has said that, but we need to know for sure if, if that's true.
Yeah. If somebody doesn't come, we don't find someone that's gonna be able to fit that role, what's gonna happen, yeah.
Right.
What, what can it, what can we do, how much, how much people, well, that's.
So Bob, can you have that conversation with him?
Okay, and is it a part-time thing, or what is it, what are we looking at here, so?
Yeah.
And obviously, if you're contract negotiating, if that was.
You know.
Yeah, third.
Perhaps, and again, yeah, but that's, see, that's what it all comes down to, it all depends. If we don't find somebody, I'm just saying, let's just say we don't.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's good to have, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's good to have that.
It's not ideal to have a part-time superintendent during a build.
Yeah.
But it also is not ideal to have no superintendent.
No.
Right.
So we need to have somebody there to carry us through at least. Till the end of next year then, which will be in time.
So then we have our. We have our plan, I mean, we're gonna post externally.
Yeah.
We're gonna have. You reach out to Adrian to reach out to the, and then also.
MSBA.
MSBA, but then to reach out to Adrian to see exactly what he is. So we have our list of things, our external.
Central, yeah, we're in a central, yeah.
But would an interim superintendent also be a part-time? Cause they would have, they have two hats on, right?
Well, well, if, but they're interested on site.
But.
They're on site.
Yeah, yeah, so they're in the building full-time, but two different hats, so you're saying.
That's a whole nother conversation.
That we don't even know if it's, and I'm sure that, cause the clock is.
Yeah.
We had, we had an interim once before.
Yeah.
And Dr. Blanchard was sick.
Okay.
And she was out and out and out and out and out, and we needed a superintendent, so we had a licensed person.
Oh, yeah, who was that?
Okay, so we had an interim. And we adjusted his salary up a little bit, because he was an interim superintendent, but it was still a full-time principal. So. And I, you know, reflecting back on the superintendent slash principal, Jimmy Verchek did it, cause he was a working doc, he worked all the time, and he was good at it. We tried it with the next one, and it didn't work out so good. I'm just saying. So here's what we're gonna do, we are going to post externally and have a conversation about internal. I am gonna reach out to MSBA to find out what's the fee for doing the search for us. And. I'll talk to Grand Boobah and see what he's gonna do. Okay.
We need a motion for that external posting, or read.
We can make any motions.
I don't think we can make any motions.
We can't do it today, maybe, you know, we can add it to the agenda for Monday if you'd like. That'd be easy enough to do.
Yeah, it's not gonna start, it's not gonna get posted.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Just add to the agenda Monday.
Yeah.
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 Posting, it's just like, there goes my weekend.
Lucy, you wanna add that for Monday, please? Mike, you wanna add that for Monday? Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So we're no better off.
Well, we have a plan.
We're, yeah.
Okay.
But the problem is, is we can't manufacture somebody, we can't make, we can't make.
Can't make it, no.
But yeah, yeah.
Happen, so. Yeah.
Gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah.
I think cloning is illegal, so.
So, I mean, I wish, I wish there was like some, you know, brilliant answer, but, you know, somebody has to be interested in this position, they have to be qualified for this, and then you have to. You know, wanna take this position, or you wanna, you know, so we, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
So.
Okay.
Excellent.
Anya.
Oh, I got it.
Oh, he just endorsed it, yeah.
Second.
With, without objection, maybe it's adjourned. Thanks, everybody, good discussion.